No, no, there's a letter from him. Better than the last Tuesday morning.
He's walking better. I'm mad to do what he is, I didn't notice he walked in.
You didn't say anything bad.
No, yeah. I didn't know. Walked in.
Good morning, today is Tuesday, August the 10th, and this is the Management and Internal Services Committee meeting. I am calling this meeting to order, and please join me with an invocation to start the meeting. Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful day. Thank you for the, for the rights we have in this great country, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Be with us this morning as we make decisions that will affect our, our community, our neighbors, our families. Please help us to make those decisions in fairness and in truth, in your name we pray, amen. Please join me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Thank you, we have a quorum this morning with all three members being present, and gentlemen, may I have an approval of the minutes of the previous meeting and executive session, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So moved. For today's agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Not to my knowledge, Madam Chair.
May I have an approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, we'll move forward, we'll start with a couple of presentations first. Mr. Blanchard, what do you have for us today?
Okay, well ma'am, it gives me a great pleasure to present that we've received an award. The Center for Digital Government is an agency that it's a, it's not affiliated with any specific government, it's just a, a national organization of professionals that they attempt to look at different technologies, or the world of technology and government, and see how they intersect, and what ways, what are the best practices? What are the emerging technologies and things like that, that, that we can kind of take knowledge and information from all the different counties and cities in the nation, apply some best practices to what we do as technology professionals. We submitted last year for an award from this, from the Center for Digital Government, and we came in fourth place. I'd like to report that this year, we submitted an award and we came in third.
Congratulations.
Well, there's some interesting information behind that. Essentially, what they do is release surveys that have various questions about what emerging technologies are you exploring as a government? What are you doing about security and things like that? They also have questions where we are given the opportunity to talk about the various projects that we work on. So, in essence, it's a little bit of a, bit of a brag about all the different things that we've been doing with technology. So, I have to write, I won't call it a doctoral dissertation, but I share what the different projects are that we've been working on. So, the survey response this year encompassed a lot of different departments and divisions within the organization. GIS played a large role in that, things like our drone program were one of the write-ups that I did. IT Department, all the infrastructure improvements that they do. Even county leadership, and the way that we manage our projects with technology meetings, the way that we handle budget is even part of, excuse me, of this process. So it looks at the entire government holistically, how we make decisions, how we use technology. So, coming in third, excuse me. I really wanted to be first, so that's an ambition to shoot for. The two companies, two counties that finished in front of us, one is a suburb of Charlotte, North Carolina, with a much larger population than us, and the other one was a suburb of Washington DC, again, with a much larger population than us. So, and to come in third, I thought that was worthy to present to you because we're definitely kind of punching above our weight. And to come in first next year again, which is my ambition, we'll have to do better than that. So, we're being ambitious, but I think that's really what we've been challenged to do. And I wanted to make sure that, that this government and all the people that work in the technology departments, and our customers who work with IT and with broadband and with GIS, to implement all these projects. This is really a team award, not necessarily just for me or my division, but for the county as well.
What a great way to showcase what all we do, because I think we are ambitious and, and, you know, progressive in a lot of things we do. Technology-wise, at least every time you come ask for money on Tuesday mornings, that's what we tell ourselves. So, it's great to see a, a recognition of not only your department, but the whole, the whole staff and the whole county. Congratulations.
Thank you ma'am.
Any other comments?
Just congratulations.
All right, next, Mr. Carney, you have a recognition as well.
First of all, I want to thank Leanne, at our last ELT meeting, she said what we pulled off in HR deserved to be recognized, and I have to agree with that. This is our HR staff, and it's more, what they did when you approved that salary matrix was much more than just uploading a file and pushing a button.
Not for me it wasn't.
Well, trust me, we went and made sure your information was right. But we went into all 1,300 roughly and 46 employees and made sure the grade was right, the salary was right, they did, not we, they did. So I, I just thought it was worthy of their recognition. And the timeframe, I was thinking, oh, we've got a month, we can make this happen. We had to wait to the last payroll in June ran before we could enter all this. So while everybody was enjoying 4th of July weekend, the staff was here on Saturday getting started. That's the kind of dedication we have in that department, so I just thought it was worthy of it. On top of onboarding the judicial circuit, on top of the healthcare bidding process you're going to hear about in a minute, and kicking off a job fair, there was a lot going on. So I, my, they always smile, they have the best attitude, so I want to recognize them by name. We've also got Tanya here, Tanya Hart, from, she's really Leanne's, but we want to bring her in our department too. She was here on Saturday with us, she's the payroll manager, and you may not have met her, so that's Tanya. Beverly LaRory, Kristen Price, Paula Sutphen, Danielle Couch, Colton, I'm sorry, Amy Whitfield, Martha Bartles, and of course, Ms. Elizabeth that everybody knows, McBurney. So this is our HR staff, and they, they deserve a round of applause.
Thank you so much for, for those of you who worked over the holiday weekend to make sure everybody's raise went into effect correctly, that's, says a lot. Do we have any other presentations? None, let's go right into the debate agenda, Mr. Johnson, what do you have for us today?
First item we have for your consideration is a service agreement with CSRA Alliance for Fort Gordon. This is an annual agreement that we do, the agreement is attached, the amount is $25,000, and it is included in the budget, staff recommends approval.
How many years have we been doing this?
Many, uh, when I was a gear, fifteen maybe, seventeen years. It started when they were going through BRAC, and Fort Gordon was on the BRAC list, so seventeen years ago maybe, something like that.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
Next item you have for your consideration are also service agreements, these are for, from discretionary funds. You can see the allocations listed there for the Columbia County Ballet, the Fire 5K, the Concerned Women Inc., and staff recommends approval.
Second.
So moved, next.
The next item we have for your consideration is supplemental pay for extension service employees. As you know, when we onboarded the judicial circuit, we had several state employees that we supplemented their pay as a result of them being here in Columbia County, and typically, we attract a higher level employee. I can certainly say that about our Cooperative Extension Office, 4H Office, Trip does an outstanding job there of managing that office with, with a small staff. And quite frankly, in, in my estimation, they are, they are pretty underpaid for what they do. So, we talked about the possibility of doing supplemental pay for the extension service employees. This is within their current budget, you'll see that we have a budgeted amount of $138, $987. We have that budgeted, and it includes five positions, one is a vacant position. After discussions with Trip and I, and then he ran it up the flagpole with the university system, what we're wanting to do is take $22,000 of that unspent money and do that in the form of supplements. What that will mean is, if they ever get ready to fill this position, they will have to come back to this board to get authorization to fund it. So it's going to be a authorized position, but an unfunded position. So it's not something they can go back next week and just fund and go over budget. It is within their budgets, actually under their allotted budget, and staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
I apologize, my screen is not loading, maybe you can help me.
Okay.
Why are we doing this again?
Basically, what it boils down to-
Did they get the pay raises we gave?
They do not, that, that's, that's the key. So, when we, when we went and raised the, the salary for our entry-level workers, we had people that worked for the, for the extension office out there actually looking to leave extension to apply for jobs in the county, because they could make a lateral move and make considerably more money. They, they were not affected by that. So, after looking at that, and, and we actually had one, one or two employees that were looking at other jobs in the county, Trip and I talked about it, we thought it'd be a good idea, they, they've got a good team out there, we really want to keep them together.
I apologize, I can't see the data.
It's okay.
Could have handed it to Michael. Thank you. So the total budget is 139.
Correct, we're currently paying 110, so we're adding one, we're adding 22,000 to the 110, so it would be 132. They'll still come in under their, their budget.
Move to consent, I don't know, second.
So moved, next.
The next item we have for your consideration is a contract with CSRA Probation Services. As you know, the Superior Court has the ability to choose the outside provider for probation services, but that is a contract that goes through the commission. So, they're asking that they enter into a contract with CSRA probation beginning July 16th, which was the beginning of the term and expiring June 30, 2022, and staff recommends approval.
Do they set the rates in here?
The rates are set in there, you can see those, they're, they're actually for, obviously, the, the probationer pays the, the fee. Yes, so, yes, they, they are, yep, they are set.
Move to consent.
Second. The next we have is our safety incentive discount. This is our work, Workers Comp Fund. As you know, we received a check totaling $125,607 in February as our pro-rata share. So, as we continue to utilize this, we're asking for the, for the board to sign the safety discount verification form for Columbia County to receive the incentive program discount for next year.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
The next item we have is, is our, our medical insurance, and I'm going to ask Dr. Carney to come up and, and talk about this, I'm going to chime in. And we've also got our consultant and Elizabeth here, if there are any questions. This has been a arduous process, but they've done a, a great job of, of saving us some money. Jeff, you want to tell us about it?
Sure, first, again, I want to thank you guys for approving us hiring Russell Head a while back as our consultant, because I think you're going to see the benefit. Russell, for those that don't know, you raise your hand, so that we can see, he's head capital, is who we work with. He and Elizabeth have been attached at the hip the last month and a half with a committee of about eight or nine of us employees. Russell narrowed it down to four major players that basically could handle the business of somebody our size. It was Maritain, United Healthcare, who we currently have, Humana, and Anthem. They came in and presented to the committee, and after the committee, Russell went back and had them do a best and final, and crunched their numbers and so forth, and came back, and it was his recommendation, and when you see the numbers, that we would go with Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is not who we currently go with, their cost was 11 point, 11.5 million roughly. The next closest competitor was a million and a half more. So they, due to that, you can't say no to something like that, and they are the largest healthcare provider in Georgia. And based on the prices that they're giving us, we feel comfortable, I don't know if Scott, if you want to talk about the-
Yeah, let, let me talk about what we're, what we're proposing to do with, with the plans real quick. When, when our insurance was rising, and, and our employees were, as they consumed that insurance, for example, if they went to the emergency room instead of MedNow, it cost us considerably more money. We went on the road and met with every person in the county that has insurance and basically told them, guys, we're all in this together, we're a self-planted program, you need to, to choose wisely when you're spending your insurance dollars. And our employees did that, we've been able to cut our cost in insurance over the last, really, couple of years, and the, and the numbers look a lot better with the rising cost of insurance, so you would think it'd be the opposite. But we did tell the employees that if the insurance continued to rise, that we were going to have to continue to go up on their premiums, we had no choice. But, but we, we did tell them that if there was a way we could get this in check and get the insurance rates down, then that we may be able to pass on the savings to them, no promises, but we may be able to do that. So I think our, our staff and the employees have worked really hard to do that. I, I really want to, again, commend the, the folks that worked on this committee, and Russell, who is an expert in this field. You know, when, when we came back with United, who was our incumbent, you may or may not know this, but it's been in the news, so I can say it. You know, United Healthcare is having some issues with University Hospital. And there was a time about a month, month and a half ago, that I was going to have to make a decision to let the employees know they could no longer use University Hospital, and then, and we would need to decide what we needed to do. There's, that riff is still there. So, University Hospital is a huge provider for, for our employees, and not having them as an option is going to be difficult. We don't know where that is even today, and Russell is, he lives in that world, he, he's kind of, has the insight on it. So, while we've been with United for, over, I think, seventeen years, about seventeen years, right? We've been with it for seventeen years, and they, they provide a great service, it's just time for us to do something different. And Anthem, you can see how aggressive their, their program is. Now, remember, our, our insurance is going to be the same, because we set our, our, our policies, we set our rates, we set, we set all those things. So, for the employee, it's not going to change, but with the amount of money that we're saving, we were able to say that we could go with a little bit lower deductible on both of the plans, and that we could go back to a cost sharing of 80/20 for the employees. That's not going to cost the county any more money, we're going to be able to realize that within the current savings. We were able to look at that and able to do that, so trying to pass that on, but, but again, the medical plan itself pretty much stays the same.
You know, partially self-insured, or is this a fix?
We are self-ins, yes, we are, we are, correct, that's correct, they're our carrier.
The Reader's Digest version of what that means, the limits?
Yeah, Elizabeth, you want to come up and talk about that? Come on up here and talk about the, the limits and the, and what it means for us. I, I have an idea, but I will certainly mess it up, so I'll pass it off to the expert. Yeah, talk to us about being self-insured, and what are our limits, and, and how does that work?
Self-insured, then the county takes on every claim. Contracts are for aggregate. For the claims. Ain't all costs. So, basically. Stop loss. Per employee. Currently we're paying. Now with a new.
So the $11 million just covers the, above the 250?
It covers anything up to that, it, it covers your basic. Plus the stop loss.
Right, but I'm just making sure I'm clear, we're paying the first 250, or they are?
No, we are paying.
Okay, so then what is our, what is our real cost?
It would, its dependence are on the amount of claims.
Right, well, last year.
Last year, we were running about, if I remember.
I think it was about a little under 12 million.
A little over 12.
All in, or just what the county was paying? Okay.
All in.
All in, that was everything.
This 11.5 is their estimate of what our claims will be and the administrative cost? It's, it's the total amount the county made pay.
Not, not in addition to, because what I was hearing was, we have the first 250 of everything, plus we're paying them $11 million, I didn't-
No.
No, I'm sure it was me.
But it is, it should.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jeff?
No, just a recommendation to go on a contract with Anthem.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. You have anything else for us?
Uh, not, not now, thank you.
Move to Internal Services.
Yes, the first item I have for your consideration is the 2021-22 Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Grant Award. This is for Juvenile Court. This is the ninth consecutive year that we have been awarded this grant, and the, the amount of it is $118,739. This is the same amount that we received this past fiscal year. And basically, the Juvenile Court uses this funding to support the Community Connections Programs, specifically their Court Intervention Services Program, which I believe is their teen court that they have, that they hold, I think it's monthly. But these funds go to support that program. The staff recommends approval with the chairman authorized to sign any documents.
Second.
So moved, next.
The next item I have for you is similar to one that was presented for the Workers Comp Program. This is for our General Liability and Property Liability Insurance, it's the safety discount that we get through that program. We have complied with all the requirements for it, and you'll see the list there of what the requirements are. And we will receive a premium discount of 5% on our 2022-23 contribution. And we are required to submit this by September 15th in order to receive the discount for next year.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, good job. Great Technology Services.
Ma'am, the first item I have for your consideration is the renewal of our annual support and license agreement with Tyler Technologies for IS World Software. That's the software that's used by the Tax Commissioner's Office and the Tax Assessor's Office for their day-to-day business processes. The cost of that is $155,150, and it's funded through the IT Department operating budget for this fiscal year. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
Right, this next item is Fiber Construction Maintenance and Restoration Services vendor. The broadband utility, of course, provides services to different entities, businesses in the county. But we do not do our own construction. Say that, I mean the work that takes place to get fiber from point A to point B. It's not economically feasible for us to maintain the equipment to do that, so we hire a contractor to do that. So that's what this agenda item is for. Company, in this case, we've selected Highlighter after a RFP process that we worked on with the procurement department. Highlighter is being recommended as the vendor to perform these services for us. We've got a contract for a two-year term with the option to renew for three additional one-year terms. And while there, there's no fixed amount for this, it's really going to, on the amount of construction that we need to do, for road projects and for projects where we'll add customers to our, our network. The cost is covered in the CIP budget for broadband for this year.
Approval.
They bill you, is it per, or what, what is the?
Cost.
It's really billed per linear foot.
It, the, no, it's not an exact amount, or less, just depending on-
Well, it's dependent on volume, yes ma'am.
Whether or not it's, has to be bored or trench.
Right.
And some of it may be reimbursed due to a project, if it's a road project or some other project, it may be, it's not a million dollars out of their budget necessarily.
No.
Move to consent.
So moved, thank you, next.
Next item I have for you is the 2021 Cisco Smart Net Renewal. We use Cisco products for our technical application, that includes our voice licensing, the endpoint protection, the antivirus that we have on our, our PCs and equipment, network gear, routers, firewalls, essentially, most of the behind-the-scenes network gear that we have is Cisco. So this is for the smart net renewal, and this agenda item is going to authorize us to proceed with the renewal of that 2021-2022 smart net for the cost of $225,544.60. That is covered in IT's operating budget for this year, staff recommends approval.
So this is just for support?
Sir.
We use them a lot?
Pardon me?
We use, do, do we get a lot of support out of them, do we have to?
Yes, sir, we do.
Move to consent.
One of those things, you, you want to have this support. Anytime, obviously, as dependent as we've become on the network, you know, obviously, IT knows the moment the network is down because the phone calls start. So, having this equipment in place and having it supported, and Sean McCarroll can speak more to the, the support in detail if we need to, but performance has been very well, or very good from the company that we deal with.
Move to consent.
So moved, one more?
One more, yes ma'am. This is our 2021-2022 Microsoft Enterprise Agreement Annual Payment. We signed a three-year agreement, a three-year enterprise agreement with Microsoft last year, so that was your number one, this is your number two, and of course, we'll see the similar payment for this next year, just FYI. This provides us with all the Microsoft licensing, everything on, on every desktop computer, the licenses for all of our email, the support that we get, or rather, the, all of the, the online services, things like SharePoint, Microsoft Teams. We do, it, it looks like a large amount of money, it is a large amount of money, but we use this every single day. We have hundreds of employees using this every single day all year. The agenda item is seeking authorization to pay the second installment of the agreement, which is $284,243.78, which is funded through the IT operating budget. Staff recommends approval.
Already approved agreement. Approving the-
This is approving the payment, yes ma'am.
We already agreed to.
Right.
Gentlemen, do you agree to pay the payment that we already agreed to pay?
Ma'am. Move to consent.
So moved. Anything else for us today, Mr. Blanchard?
No ma'am, wouldn't you agree that's enough?
That's enough, thank you. Are there any other agenda items that I've missed? Any legal matters? Legal matters, staff reports.
First one, just for your information, is our personnel savings, you can see that we've already reached $178,000 of our $350,000 budget goal. I will say that, that there was a question about our applications and, and, you know, were we seeing more applications after we changed the, the salary matrix? And, and we actually did, I, I think, I showed you some of this earlier, but for the month of April, we only received a total of 182 applications for all of our jobs. May was 184, June was 421, and then when the new salary matrix went into effect in July, we received 1,036 applications. We're on pace to receive more than that this month. Now, a lot of that may be people going back to work, a lot of that may be people that were, you know, on unemployment, that are looking for jobs, but it's certainly an, an indicator, I think, as to, as to- But it's certainly an indicator, I think, as to where we were and kind of where we are now. And we're getting some really good applicants. So, you'll continue to see these personnel savings. We do this. It's a bit organic, the way we function, that we're going to have some salary savings for budgeted money. But I think we're going to get some good employees as well.
And thanks for the turnover information.
Yes, sir. Turnover rate, you can see that there.
That keep adding the month below, you know, so we just see it as it goes.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we will. We will. And that rate that you see there is pretty consistent.
Thank you. Internal Services.
First report I have for you is the year-to-date budget report. We have begun our new fiscal year. So, the information you receive is as of July 31st, 2021. We are, we should be operating around 8.3%. Of course, revenues will continue to be a little under that until we receive property tax dollars. And we are currently working on June 30 year-end data. The audit should start in September, and I will keep you updated on that.
Update?
Yes, the SPOS report is through the month of June. We collected just over $2.7 million for June, and our annualized percentage increase is now 20.57%.
Good work. Take the afternoon off.
Thank you.
And the investment report?
Yes, the investment report is attached for the month of June, just for your review.
I have no questions.
No questions? Very good. Have no questions? Except those as information. Do we have any commissioner or public comment, anything about their participation? We have no executive session. So, having no further business, we will adjourn and come back in three minutes. Thank you. That went well.
The Planning Development and Planning Service Committee for August the 10th. We've already had the indication, the pledge. Three members present. Have the minutes that are attached. Your approval.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion carried. Any changes to the agenda?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Chairman.
There are no presentations. We'll move right into the debate agenda.
Hey, I'm going to ask Mr. Prithakov and give you all some money back.
Thank you.
Like Michael.
This is a deductive change order for our re-roof project at the Detention Center. As you know, this was a project we started back sometime in February. Pretty big re-roof job. Came in under budget. This was the unused amount out of the allowances. Staff recommends approval of a deduct change order for $42,990.
Move to consent.
Motion carried. Thank you. Always want money back. Next is Planning Services.
Yes, before you, we have an encroachment agreement for 3586 Pebble Beach Drive. What we have here is a pool that has been installed, and the pool deck portion will be in a sanitary sewer easement. So, staff is recommending approval for the easement encroachment for that portion of the pool deck to be within the sanitary sewer easement in the backyard.
So, they already built it?
My understanding. The pool itself is not within the easement. It's the pool deck.
Right.
The portion of the pool deck is within.
Move to consent.
Says that they understand they'd have to pull it up if...
That's correct. We're not responsible if we need to get in there.
Second.
Motion carries. Any legal matters? Move right on to the reports, sir.
All right. Attached for your information is the July 21st Planning Department workload measurement monthly report. I'll answer any questions you might have.
So, we're flat on the home?
A little bit at this point. In terms of our side of it, we haven't received as many of late, although that's, you know, you can read into that a couple of different ways, certainly. We have a number of developments that are out there in planning stages or in the construction of phasing. So, we may have more lots on the ground here before the end of the year. I anticipate we'll have at least two or three that I can think of off the top of my head. So, that'll be, you know, a couple hundred more lots for sure. That'll be available before the end of the year. Next is the June 21st Plan Review workload monthly report. Again, attached for your information. Can I answer any questions we have about that? Again, we're getting them in and getting them out pretty quickly, so pretty confident about that.
Questions? Next item?
Next item, I'm going to have Grace Jansen come up. We're going to do a quick just unveiling of the new future land use map and where that can be accessed. Of course, there's, it's part of the comprehensive plan update that we just recently completed. We updated the future land use map, tweaked it where necessary. But one of the things that we have on the county website, of course, is Maps Online. One of the tools, I guess you could say, for that is Future Land Use Map, the 2016 version. This is a much more robust, information-driven update. Grace can just kind of show you real quickly. This is just the pop-up dialog box that just kind of tells you what it's about. This is what it looks like when you pull it up. One of the neat features, and you'll see here in the bottom right, is now all the character areas are in polygon format. And what that does is you can specifically go to a particular character area, if you're interested, and then pull it up. One of the things that you're also able to do, be able to look at individual areas of that character area and pull up the information that gives you acreage. So, if we're looking at, in this case, we added two new characters, this one being the in-town neighborhood character area. You can see that certain polygons, you know, that you might be looking at. That total area of interest is 145 acres. One of the great features, of course, is you can type in a specific address. It takes you directly, you can zoom directly to that location. And then, of course, you'll be able to see the results of that. So, just wanted commission and committee to be aware of this tool. This is just one of the many tools in the toolbox, of course. But what it does is it provides the public, our development community, us as staff, to be able to utilize this quickly. You can take a screenshot, basically, of that, download that for your own benefit, whatever that may be, for presentations, for just general information to your, whoever you're dealing with on a day-in, day-out basis. So, just wanted to give you kind of a first glance at it. We're going to put this up probably in the next couple of days. It'll be available on the website.
And you'll get to it, just like you would go into the regular...
Just through Maps, just through Maps Online. It'll be a toggle. Grace, you can help me with that part.
So, it's a web browser, kind of interactive map. We can link it from the web pages. We can add it to the applications page that we have several of our other apps linked to. Or that can be added to. That way, it's in places already looking.
Information. Just wanted you guys to be aware of that as we roll that out now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
I'll move into Development Services, please.
All right, the first item I have is the 2020-2021 July report. And attached is a copy of that for your information, no further action required. Answer any questions you may have on that.
No questions?
All right, the next one is our 2021 financial report. And a copy of that report is attached for your information. No further actions needed.
Questions?
And the last one we have is the temporary event alcohol permits and a copy of those.
Questions, comments?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from commissioners or public comments? Nothing for executive session, so we stand adjourned at 9:11.